Roll call.
Bidlak.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Stricker.
Here.
McCarrigan.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. Notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of the agenda.
No changes, Betsy.
Citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that this matter requires emergency action. Emergency action, I'm guessing. Closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the items on the agenda as per section 84, 1410 of the Nebraska revised statutes. Public comments. The purpose of this agenda item is to allow for public comment of items for potential discussion at a future council meeting. Comments brought to the council are information only. The council will not take any action on the item except for referring it to staff to address for placement on a future council agenda. This comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any public comments?
You're our only hope.
All right. Consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separate. Are there any questions, comments on the consent calendar? No.
No.
Is this where I need to declare the conflict or do I need to wait?
No, let's just.
Okay.
Okay. There's no questions or comments then?
No.
No.
I'll take a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Check it.
Okay. Roll call.
Phillips.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Bidlak.
Yes. Okay. Now I think you're off. Does this work or do I have to wait till you?
Just number nine.
Okay. Nine, claim removed from consent calendar.
And I need to declare a conflict due to financial interest in interlinks.
You'll need a first and a second.
Okay.
To accept.
Accept that.
To accept this.
I make a motion to accept council Phillips' request to be declared a conflict of interest.
Okay. We need a second.
I guess I'll second.
Okay.
Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Bidlak.
Yes.
Phillips. Upstain.
Say yes?
Upstain.
Upstain, thank you.
Do we have to do that every time or just this first time?
Every, every second meeting we're gonna have to do that.
Okay. Okay.
But now you need to approve that claim.
Okay. So now we need to go back, claim removed from consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the claim to interlinks that was removed from the consent calendar.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions? Comments on that? Okay. Roll call.
Stricker.
Yes.
Bidlak.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Phillips.
Upstain.
Okay. Financial report.
Okay. Here we go. The first page here is comparing October to October of '23. Nothing very remarkable here. Lane has highlighted some, some items on here. Now, this is like our checkbook, so it's cash in, cash out, pretty much on these first two pages. But you'll see our alarm payment, our alarm payment plus a bond with transportation. You'll see our ARPA projects there and those are always gonna be kind of an anomaly because it's money we usually don't have, we usually don't spend, so you're gonna see those a lot here in the near future. TIF payments. This, this is our TIF bond payments and it used to say CRA, but it's been changed to TIF and it'll, it'll make you think that that line is funded, but it's not. It's just a pass through for those TIF.
Yeah.
It's TIF money coming in and TIF money going out and we do keep a 6% administrative fee, but that's, that's what you're seeing there. Then wastewater, there's a budgeted equipment purchase and then stormwater bomb payment. Pretty sure that's 42nd Street up there. I think we have one more bond payment for 42nd Street. We don't have a lot of debt. We don't. We bonded 20th Street, there was some money in debt service. We, so we bonded 27th Street because you have to incur debt to get the money out of debt service. So we did, we will bond the chip seal. And we do that every five years. We do have one more payment on the chip seal and then that'll start over again.
At 42nd, we're gonna be done with it now.
I think there's one more payment.
And then we're done.
And then we're done.
Okay.
Yep. So the next page.
One more. So the chip seal, one more bond payment from, from how long ago?
Five years. We chip seal every five years.
Okay, okay.
Yep. So I think the act, actually, the, the last chip seal bond payment will be in 2025 and then our first bond payment on the new chip seal project will be 2026.
Okay.
And when we do that, we hit all the roads in the city at one time?
Well, we try to. We budgeted $2.6 million to do that project, so if oil went way up.
Yeah.
We would do $2.6 million worth of roads because that's what we have the budget authority to spend, so.
You budgeted worst case scenario.
We think that's what it's gonna take to do all of, all of the streets, so. And that's an engineer's estimate.
Those are residential. We stay over the asshole of the country.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm masking as we go so I don't go back.
Absolutely.
And so the, on the special projects where it notes ARPA expenses, so all of the ARPA funds, are they committed and are they all in this special projects line?
They're, they're gonna funnel through there.
Okay.
But I wouldn't consider all of them obligated just yet. We're working on that. We're going through a reimbursement project, so we want to go back and pay for previous projects with those ARPA funds to free up funds that we can continue to spend on general fund projects.
Could there be kind of a summary of what those are and what the plans are at some point in time?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just the ARPA funds?
Yeah.
Yep.
We can do that. That's not an issue. I, I hate to give it a shot without reviewing, but it's not too complicated just yet.
Fair enough.
We've spent some out at Cleveland Field, the Oakfield fence, the, we've spent a little bit on the library, that water tower, the cooling tower project was not an ARPA fund. That was a budgeted item, but we're in hopes that we can go back and reimburse with ARPA funds to free up that $440,000 and essentially obligate those funds and meet the requirements of the ARPA funding. So all of, all of the ARPA funds have been spent on general fund projects, pretty much parks.
And if I understand right, that money is in the accounts of the city of Scottsbluff?
It is in our budget. Oh, it's in, it's in our account, yes.
Okay.
It is in our accounts. It's almost 2.6 million, it's 2.5, so.
Okay.
Came to us in two different payments. It's sitting in our account. It's in our budget. We have the budget authority to spend it, so.
And we've got up to the end of December to commit to what we wanna do, but we can spend it throughout the next year.
Correct.
Is that right? Two years?
Two years. We have to have it obligated by the end of this year and then we have till December of 2026 to spend it.
Okay.
So.
I think that when we met you, you said that it was '25, the end of '25.
No, it's 2026.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. If I said '25, I misspoke.
Okay.
It is December of 2026.
Okay.
Yep.
Fair enough.
So the big thing right now is getting it obligated and meeting those, those requirements, and we think we have a good plan to do that. Let's see. So if you go to the next page, Zach, we're gonna look at the current month and October and then November of '23 and November of '22. And Lane has some things highlighted, the bond payments in '18 and '20, some ARPA expenses, and then budgeted equipment purchases and that bond payment out of stormwater. So if we keep scrolling, Lane put this together to show the expenditures and the revenues to make this a little bit easier for you so you can look at those percentages. We're through two months, so we're, we should be at 16.6. And.
We're all pretty.
So this, this is representative of that. So you got expenditures on top, first two rows or columns or however you wanna look at that, and revenues last two. And then the next page is revenues versus expenditures, November 2024. Everything looks good. What I do and what I like to do, and Zach, if you'll just keep scrolling a little bit, I wanted to show you some of this. The general fund right there, 111, you'll see that, that four, you'll see 111-4.
Yeah.
Anytime you see that dash four, that's a revenue. Okay? The dash five will be an expenditure. So you can identify those pretty quickly, so. Fund 111 is our general fund. And if you scroll down through there, all of our percentages should be about 84. Some of these smaller budgeted departments, they'll incur some annual expenses that kinda skew the numbers like insurance and stuff like that, so that'll bring their percentage down, but they'll catch back up over, over the years or over the months. So I've looked through all of this. Everything is in order and we are on track.
Good.
Revenues and expenditures. So, you know, we'll have some very big annual payments upfront. The alarm payment is about a million bucks, so that is a big expense, so, and that's spread out in, in the funds. Workman's comp is always a fund that always seems to come in a little more than projected because it's bigger and a different time than our budget is composed. So that's kinda skews the numbers, but we're in good shape. We catch up over the months and everything, everything looks really good. Do you guys have any questions?
Is it too early on sales tax? Is it coming back up?
We don't know yet.
Okay.
You have the most recent report and it was down a little bit.
A little bit.
But if you go and if you look at this year's sales tax receipt and you skip last year and you go to the one prior to that, '23, it'll be pretty close, it'll be above that, nothing close to the same. And I think you're seeing the hailstorm in the roofs and construction and stuff going on, so I think that's what's bringing that down. Now, I do expect with the new additions to the mall and stuff, hopefully we'll see the bottom.
Yeah.
So, so no need to panic yet.
No, no.
Seven emails, we just watch and see how it goes, so. I don't, I don't think there's anything unexpected, so. Any other questions about the financials?
No, thanks.
Yep. You're welcome.
Okay. I need that approved as well, right? Need a motion to approve.
Yes.
Okay. The financial report.
I'll move to approve the financial report.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Matt and a second by Scott. Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Stricker.
Yes.
Bidlak.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Okay. Public hearings. Council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at 6:00 PM for the purpose of reviewing and obtaining comment on a redevelopment plan submitted by 190121 Scottsbluff LLC for the Scottsbluff Inn renovation redevelopment project. So I'll open the public hearing.
And Shereah can't be here tonight, so.
Okay.
Andrew, who represents this project, is here to talk on behalf of the developer.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Andrew Willis on behalf of the Afghan developer, 190124th Street LLC, and it's the obviously informed for this purpose. And then it'll be Craig Reed, Lincoln, he's done a lot of, done a lot of development work across the state, really knows who it's as well. The project before, even again, this has been through planning commission and CRA so far, so we have received recommendation for approval so far. The plan would be to renovate and remodel the Scottsbluff Inn, the hotel is onsite. This would not be a demo, it would be interior demolition, but keeping the structure that exists there, renovating, doing quite a bit, a substantial amount of work, but then ultimately to replace that with a new hotel. 70 rooms. It would be an independent hotel, not tied to a flag. And one of the questions that came up, CRA was simply asking about some of the amenities involved that were part of this hotel. Really, the goal here, what the developer is looking at is, there wouldn't be any conference room or anything, but it's really, it's really looking more at extended stays or marketing towards extended stay, so they have a, you know, fully equipped kitchenette in each room, onsite laundry, and then fitness center and outdoor area, they're gonna be a pet friendly outdoor area, but then really that's, that's kind of the, you know, they have some of those other amenities of, you know, package handling, grocery delivery, but it's really, that's really the focus or the, I guess, the marketing plan for this, for this hotel. When we look at this really key here, you know, the, the structure right now is not, it's, it needs a lot of work. So the, the site is under contract, developer will, is not, is contingent upon getting TIF, so this project really will not go forward without TIF. Assuming that this is approved, then the plan is to close on the acquisition, buy the property and then during 2025 do all the renovation and really have an operational beginning of 2026. It's gonna take, you know, quite a bit of interior demolition, renovation, roof replacement. The roof is in pretty bad shape, so that's probably the biggest pieces of it, plenty of those landscaping, some other facade enhancements. It's really gonna look a lot nicer, but, and that's the plan. Now, another thing I would mention that we discussed with the CRA is, that's the plan. I don't have a lot of very specific details yet and the reason for that is, this is truly a project that if there's no TIF available, then this, this won't happen. The developer's not going for it, so they have not wanted to invest a significant amount of money to design in those details yet because it really doesn't work otherwise. It's about, it's at least probably $3.4 million in costs they're looking at overall to get the, to get this site renovated. And again, it just doesn't work without TIF. One thing I note, when looking at this and, you know, the use of taxing for financing and really deferring that incremental tax over created for the next 15 years, this site in particular has been decreasing steadily in assessed value for quite a period of time. So, you know, in 2012, the site was, when the hotels operated, the site's valued at right under $2 million, 1.977, 1,977,000. 2018, it's now valued at just under $1.6 million. Now, 2024, we're at $274,000 of valuation, assessed valuation. So we're already seeing a decrease in assessed valuation and a natural decrease in the taxes that are being provided by this site. Without any, you know, the assistance of TIF, there's, there's no expectation that that would change. So this really is a, it's more of a project of, you know, truly redevelopment, bringing that site back to life, bringing it back online. We're the same type of use, it'll be a hotel again, but really bringing back the use that through dilapidation, light subsaner conditions has, it just needs, it needs to be renovated and, and it just doesn't work without, without TIF. Again, as I mentioned, looking at about three and a half million dollars of costs and the estimated, estimated cost of the development, again, looking at projected site TIF uses. The acquisition of, the acquisition of the site, so just general site preparation, all that interior demolition, the roof removal, replacement of the roof, some facade enhancements, architectural engineer costs, legal costs, again, it's over a million dollars of costs we think are, you know, we've highlighted as we said eligible costs in this project. There's probably some additional ones as well, the rest we're gonna, I think, that's what those TIF dollars are gonna become and really be used. You know, looking through this project, it's, I already mentioned, you know, kind of our proposed use, it's, from a, from a zoning perspective, and again, it's a benefit plan in addition to zone C2, it's a permitted use, obviously the same use it was, it'd be the same building footprints for a land coverage site ratio, it's all the same footprint, so it really shouldn't have any, no anticipated profits there. We've got a former hotel, we use as a hotel, we believe that that would, you know, the site would be adequate for that through street layouts and all those items, so we don't really foresee any significant issues with this, other than the benefit of bringing, bringing back the hotel to the site. As I mentioned, we're really looking at projected value, over averaging out over those 15 years, about $3.9 million, which, which could be an incremental amount of roughly $71,000 if it all works out. And again, that's kind of built on that natural, you know, that loss already, you've seen the tax revenue for the site, there's about $35,000 loss, so we're bringing that back and adding some more, so really this is a, as a positive, then impact wise, again, bringing back that hotel, bringing back some of those jobs that would have previously been at that hotel, again, it's, it's gonna be, you know, just, it's gonna be very market driven, very similar to what you'd expect as, as for a hotel. No really impacts other than that, no impacts on the school population, it's not a residential project, it'll be nice and many, it's a good place, good location, fits well with the comprehensive plan. And I guess I'd be really, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now or if, or if there's more questions after any other comments, but again, I just, we really hope to support this and it's, we think it's gonna be a good project, but it really does, it's a, one that really does need TIF to make it work.
Other comments, questions?
Well, I have about four of them whenever you're done.
I just have one quick one. So is the intent to try and have some of the work done by local contractors?
Yes, I think a lot of it will be.
Okay.
Good. So I don't, these aren't in any particular order, but what are the, the number of rooms is the building currently sits?
I am not sure the current number, but the, there will be 70 rooms. The, the plan doesn't have 70 rooms when it's operational.
The point of that is, is that if there's 40 currently, let's say, is the parking adequate?
I, I think it's right around the same number. I, I don't believe exactly, but it's right around the same, because again, I've been doing some, a lot of interior remodeling, but again, footprint wise, it's the same building size. So I'm not sure if it's, it's in the, it's in the same ballpark, but we do think it's adequate.
Okay. Then along the lines of the physical facilities, I've been gone for a long time, but I seem to remember there's a pool there in the middle. Is that staying?
So that needs a lot of work and that's part of the reason there's some roof problems in that area. Plans to get the pool working and have that with the amenities with all the fitness center.
Then the, the next two questions are kinda related. So an extended stay, is there a city ordinance that's a maximum number of nights at least per agreement or anything?
I don't believe so. This, this is zoned to C3 and not a C2. C2 would maybe a little different, but nothing, Zach?
Not, not to Monmouth for hotels, for campground, yes, but not for hotels.
Okay. So if it's an extended stay, you can lease it for six months?
I don't, I don't know what the intent is there, but that would be up to them.
Yeah, so I, I guess I would say it's really, when a hotel, hotel developer's looking at, the idea is more of, I suppose it could be that long, but usually you're talking about weeks, maybe a month. I mean, these are, but it's probably more like that week type of stay where you have more of a kitchenette, so you have some, some different amenities and a little bit more of the kitchen amenities in a room. You know, the, the onsite laundry is kind of a piece of that as well and probably more is just in the marketing and, you know, better rates for longer stays, but you're not, I don't think people are typically staying, I, I suppose you could stay there, I suppose you can stay the regular hotel for six months, but that's not typically what you're looking at, it's more of the, it's several weeks.
You know, I know when WNCC was either adding on or remodeling some of their student housing, they house students there for, for a year, you know, for the school year.
Yeah, I would say that's kind of a unique situation, but I guess my thought is, is if, if there's no guardrails around it, what, what prevents it from being rented six months at a time, a year at a time and then just becoming another apartment house?
I, I think the layout probably, because it still is, I mean, it still is hotel rooms, even if they're a little bit, they get a little more of a kitchenette and other, and, and cost probably. Again, if you're gonna, I suppose, I don't know the exact breakdown of dollars, but you're, if you're gonna lease a place for a year, you're better off getting an apartment than a school. But really, it still is, it's, I mean, you've got, you've got some of the same services in a hotel, it's, it's still set up like a hotel. So while it's, while it's designed more for longer stays than your night or two at a hotel, I don't think it's really designed for living. You don't have, you don't have the space or the, or the comfort of two living space, but I suppose nothing is stopping somebody from doing it the same as nothing is stopping anybody from living in a hotel for a year.
Okay. And then, so lastly, then I would imagine lodging tax would apply to that regardless of state?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Are there questions? Comments? Okay. Wait, are we supposed to have any exhibits or anything that go in?
John, do you wanna talk?
If you have any questions, it may, I'd be happy to answer it. I might provide a memo for the, for the council and we believe that the, this project meets all the, checks all the boxes for approval of TIF. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I read your stuff and I mean, it's all, it's, I mean, it was pretty clear to me, just in my mind, I, it'd be nice to have some guardrails around becoming an apartment house, but that's just me.
The one thing to, to remember is that just because you're approving TIF in a redevelopment plan, you're, they still have to comply with all the city codes, city ordinances with respect to that site. So like Andrew said, it would be no different than a hotel having a suite. I mean, if somebody could write that long term, that's not the intent, but, but certainly it's, you still, they still, as a developer, have to comply with all the development standards, parking for the size, things like that. And then once it's complete, all the zoning standards.
Yeah.
And so, and so that would not be an exception to any rule that the city has.
Yeah, and I understand that somebody could do that in a hotel currently, but I don't think most hotels have a little kitchenette in them per se. So that, that's my only hesitation, so.
Any other comments, questions?
And the but four test definitely applies here.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I believe it's covered in the, you know, it's covered in the, in the plan and ER SO explained that they're not gonna buy the.
Yeah.
Buy the, buy the property unless they get TIF. buy the property unless they get TIF, because they just can't make it work.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Resolutions and ordinances, council to consider action on the resolution to approve the redevelopment plan submitted by nineteen oh one twenty one Scottsfluff LLC for the Scottsfluff Inn renovation redevelopment project. Any other questions, comments, anything you want to add?
This is just the resolution to approve the project that you just heard, so, you know, we had this area recently lighted. Did the study, and a month later, we had a TIF application. So we thought that was a pretty big victory, to be honest with you. We hope that this property does get redeveloped, and we hope that it'll inspire more development out in that area, so.
And I guess that's, I'm excited, just as anybody, for to get that cleaned up and redeveloped. I just wish there were some guardrails, but I guess I'll act on faith.
We can do it later, too. But it does need a lot of TLC, so this will really help.
Yeah.
Well, they're, they're looking to put in over three million dollars into this property, so.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a great, it's like the perfect use of what this intention is for a TIF, and I think it's, I, yeah, I think it's a great opportunity.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
Okay, a motion by Jeannie and a second by Matt, any other comments? Okay.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action approving a resolution to update the bank's signature authorization and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
This is simply just that, this is to add Betsy's name to the bank accounts, and that's it, basically. It'll be Betsy or Jeannie, and then me and Kim on the investments, still, so. It's pretty pro forma.
Any questions on that? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Scott and a second by Jerry. Call the roll.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance to consider the rezone of tax lot four B, section twenty seven, township twenty two north, range fifty five west of the sixth PM, commonly identified as the northeast corner of Avenue K and South Beltline Highway West from R one A to C three.
This, Zach presented this project, or this rezone, last meeting, I don't know if you were both in the audience, well, you were, you were both in the audience together. But it's three tax parcels that he wants to make into, three of them that are zoned R one A right now, he wants them all zoned C three. And we agree, it's in the floodplain, it should be, we shouldn't be promoting R one A or residential housing in the floodplain, and so we agree with Chris. So, go ahead, Kim.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsfluff, Nebraska, dealing with zoning, amending section twenty five dash one dash four by updating the official zoning district map to show that tax lot four B, a part of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section twenty seven, township twenty two north, range fifty five west of the sixth principal meridian, Scottsfluff County, Nebraska, currently zoned as R dash one A, single family residential, will now be included in C dash three, heavy commercial, repealing prior section twenty five dash one dash four, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question. So, so when the readings of ordinances, all or nothing, three or nothing, or can we?
You, you could waive this one right now if you wanted to, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, because it's, I was part of planning commission with this, and to me, it's pretty straightforward. And so, I guess with that, I would offer a motion to waive the third reading and approve this tonight.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Matt?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, or second, I guess.
Second, okay. Any comments on that? Okay.
Do you vote on the, on that waiver?
And then the approval, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We're voting on the waiver, have the third one.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Okay, so now vote to approve the ordinance. Okay, I have a motion for that.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry and a second by Scott, are there comments on that? Okay, we'll call.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council to consider awarding the bid for porta potty services at several parks throughout the city of Scottsfluff to Paradise Pumpers LLC and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
This is our porta potty agreement, we received three bids, Paradise Pumpers was the low bid, seven fifty a month. In discussion with staff, everybody was very pleased with Paradise Pumpers and excited that they were the low bid. So, staff is recommending the approval of Paradise Pumpers.
And we've used them before, I take it?
They had our previous contract, yes.
No problems.
Yeah.
My question, I, I see the list of the locations and where there's multiple ones, it all makes sense. Is there any, or, I've never been to any of them, or paid attention, so are they, even the one, the ones that are single? Is there any requirement for them to be handicapped, accessible?
You know, I'd have to check on that, Jerry, I don't, I don't know if we have, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
They do, at the monument, we, we've had handicap accessible ones, so it's available, but I don't know law wise where you need to have them, but they exist.
I think one at the Eighteenth Street is.
Eighteenth Street, we have one?
I think we have one like that.
So, yeah, but I think that how it's, as I recall it from past experience, how it's enforced is by complaint to whoever does the, civil rights or the ADA violations, and I'd hate to find out then.
I will tell you, if we had a complaint or a request like that, we would react to it pretty promptly. So, but whether we have, if any of these are ADA, I didn't read that in the agreement, but I can certainly find out and get you those answers.
Seems like at least the Landers complex and perhaps Eighteenth Street should at least have one, if not two, in my opinion. I'd look, I'd ask the city attorney as well.
Would, what?
I think the Eighteenth Street does, and I don't know about Landers, I can't, I can't recall if that or not, but I think that, right, if there was ever a request in the city to give one up there.
We'd do it, right.
Okay.
Have to do it, would do it.
Okay.
I would, I would recommend that you approve this agreement, and I'll get answers to those questions and find out where exactly we do have those, and, and report back.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Jeannie and a second by Jerry. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll call.
Stricker?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Okay, council to consider awarding the bid for one new truck cab chassis with dump body for the transportation department of Floyd's Truck Center in the amount of one hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We did receive one bid for the chassis from Floyd's, and we received two bids for the body. We've used Floyd's many, many times, and we've used both body companies many times, but Coist was the low. And that would be our recommendation is the chassis and the body to Floyd's, one forty nine nine ninety five, and then the Coist for the body. And it looks like a July delivery, which is impressive, you don't get that quick for a truck and box.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Mark, how many years do we normally get out of the dump trucks?
Uh, depends on the use, whoa, whoa, we've got trucks that are in the nineties there.
Wow.
Just kind of depends, we're trying to keep some of those just for hauling rock, certain things, but when they get to that point, they go away.
Okay.
But we'll keep them ten, fifteen years easy.
Would this one have a snow plow attached to the front of it?
No, we'll use this one for hauling, it'll have the tarp on the box, so we can haul leaves and the debris. We need one of those really bad, our other one is, is tired, so we'll get it.
Okay.
Under budget.
And it, yes, and it came fifty thousand under, we had two under budgeted, so, a great purchase.
Okay, good.
That's a good sign.
That's good.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, do you have a second?
One second.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on the maintenance agreement number twenty two between the city of Scottsfluff and the Nebraska Department of Transportation and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
In this agreement, we've had this for years, ninety five or ninety six, twenty four lane, shortly after that, an agreement was put together, the city would maintain from Avenue Y to the corporate limits, well, that keeps moving, so now we go high out east over there. And so what we do is we plow the snow, and we'll mow the islands, and we'll mow the rightaway, and we'll do pottle patching. And that's it, the signal lights are the states, the controllers are the states, the painting is the state. So there's seventeen points, seventeen point five two lane miles in, in Avenue Y to East Stone Room. And this year, it'll be two thousand thirty dollars per lane mile, so thirty five thousand five sixty five sixty. So every year after this, it'll go up three percent, they'll add, they'll build that into the, to the agreement each year. So we'd recommend that we continue that agreement, we send the two trucks out to plow, up, back, do the turn lanes, sand, and then we get those trucks back in for city lanes and, yeah, into the residential.
Mayor, have a question. So on the, this, this general maintenance responsibility list, I noticed that maintenance associated power costs of traffic signals and roadway lighting is referred to in the original project agreement, which I don't know what that is, is there's, it's, all those columns are blank. And I had the conversation with Kevin about if there are LED lights and if there's snow covers them, there's not enough heat to melt the snow off, then you're out scooping off the lights?
The, the state, we don't, we don't do anything with the lights.
Okay.
So I will change the bulb if they, their technician comes from back east, so if they need us, they'll call us, but they'll, in return, something for us that doesn't cost monetarily. But they are LED, and we haven't had any issue unless you have a blizzard, and we have blizzards at every single light in town.
Okay.
Because they're all LED, but we just don't, we have no responsibility for the lights, and we try to keep it that way.
Okay.
If that makes sense?
It does.
Do we control the timing of signals or any of that?
No.
No.
Their cabinets, their key, their power, their lights, their pole, right.
We, we have tried to influence those decisions.
That's hard.
Yeah, so, you know, those, when you see the shorter arrows or that, we, those really, all that's happening is the states, we don't, we don't control them.
Okay.
Snow mowing and the pottle patching.
You guys are good cleaners, I'll say that.
We try, they're a good group of, they're a good group of guys out there.
Yeah.
Once in a while, they let me do it, too. It might be when else on that league, though.
And Jerry, I think you're seeing these blank columns, this is kind of a one size fits all for.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, it's Omaha rink in first class, second class cities.
Well, it just struck me that it was the only one that was blank and it was related to LED lights and snow.
It's all in exhibit A and C, or C, actually.
And Mark, does that, does that cost that they have, does that cover our costs on it?
It does, yeah. You know, depending, chemicals they ever know each year.
Right.
But our labor costs and our pile costs, and as you can see, the trucks, you know, they're fairly expensive, but they're coming in better. If we're only out there a few times a year, you know, it, it does cover that.
Okay. And something else to consider, too, is these are our citizens traveling up and down the streets. And I don't know how long it would take for the state to get here to do that.
No, it's better this way.
Plus, this is worse.
Plus, then having to divert off onto side streets, that just makes that worse.
And I, I wasn't questioning whether we should do it or not.
Yeah.
Definitely, I was just curious.
The cost, yes, that's a good question.
Yeah, and like I said, then each year, it increases three percent to the year twenty thirty, and then they'll renegotiate again, so it's like, shouldn't go down. Somebody can let us know how that goes.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Okay. Have a second?
Second, I guess.
Okay, a motion by Scott and a second by Jerry, any other comment? Okay, call the roll, please.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Council to discuss and consider action on an agreement between locality media incorporated DBA First Do and the city of Scottsfluff Fire Department for Records Management Services and authorize the fire chief to sign the agreement.
You in for the council, Hoshenger Fire Department? So before you is a, an agreement with locality media, also, those good businesses, First Do. Back on the second of December, the county approved, moving forward with First Do as the records management system for all of the county fire departments, which includes us as well. That is for just the basics of those sort of incident report writing, and something that all departments use. Anything above and beyond is going to be the responsibility of each individual fire department. In this case, this agreement covers inspections, investigations, advanced higher modules. Those are sys, modules that we utilize, and not all the other departments do. So this agreement is for seventy four hundred dollars with a two thousand fifty dollar one time fee, and then annually thereafter, it'll be five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. There is a provision in the agreement that will allow it to increase no more than five percent every year. Typically, it's around two to three percent, but it could go up, maybe five percent, but nothing more than that annually thereafter. We have budgeted for this, we budgeted twenty four thousand dollars for records management at the beginning, because we did not know what was going to happen with the county project. They've been paying for records management for the last six years, we're switching vendors because of some changes at the United States Fire Administration level and their reporting requirements. So we did look at this as, as an all encompassing package just for us to do, and it was right around that, that estimated. But with this only having to do a handful of modules, we're seeing it being able to reuse that, so. I think that covers pretty much everything, are there any specific questions or you can have an address?
So the, what did you have, what is this replacing?
Emergency reporting is the software that we were using before for our records management. They were, they were bought out a couple of years ago by a company called ESO. And ESO is no longer supporting emergency man, or emergency reportings platform. So we could convert to ESO, but because we did some due diligence and looking at it collectively as a group, we're going to go with First Do. The reporting requirement that's changing at the national level, we're getting rid of the National Fire Incident Reporting System and going to the National Emergency, Emergency Reporting Information System. So that's going to change the way that that information flows, it's going to be direct from us to the United States Fire Administration as opposed through a whole chain of different avenues, so they tell us it'll be very streamlined, very cool, but it's still innovative.
I'm sorry, this is a software system, that's what we're doing?
Yeah.
A new software system.
Yes. And this is all cloud-based, so we don't have to maintain any servers or anything like that. It's all, it'll be all on First Due to maintain all of that. We're just utilizing that system.
Okay. And I heard you right, you do go direct to USF Fire Administration and not through the state to their, and so it's more real-time data?
It's supposed to be more real-time data. They have been doing testing for about a year now with, I think Lincoln is one of those beta-tested departments. I think there's about a hundred and fifty or so. In a fairly recent, several weeks ago, I sat through a web call, webinar, and it's, uh, with this system, and they have now gone live with it as of November first, and they'll be onboarding five thousand departments in the next quarter, first quarter of the year, uh, and basically five thousand departments every quarter until the end of next year. So, we have, we have a little bit of time to get this going. It roughly took about six months, is our understanding, to get this open running.
So, basically, emergency reporting, ESO is no, not even compatible with the new way of doing things?
Emergency reporting will not be, because ESO will not support it.
Yeah, okay.
So, that sparked the change in vendors. We did look at ESO's solution, we also looked at First Due's solution, and there was a few others that we, we looked at as county departments all collectively. And we made the recommendation to go to First Due based on the way it looked or presented, and the county accepted that, and they were a little bit cheaper for that group rate.
That was a good one. So, you do get a discount from all doing it collectively?
Yes, we do get a discount collectively. Collectively, the basic programs for all departments, fifty-four thousand dollars and so change. Uh, that's the, including the one-time fee, and that goes down to about forty-eight thousand annually thereafter. But for big departments, it's, it's pretty good.
Any other questions on that? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the agreement for, uh, First Due.
Okay, your motion by Jerry, do you have a second?
One second.
Second by Matt. Any other comments? Okay, call the roll, please.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Um, council reports, this item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members on meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Anybody have any?
Well, so, this is the first time, so bear with me. So, I went to the Western Nebraska Economic Development Meeting on the twelfth, Thursday the twelfth, with Shirea, and they reported just a couple of highlights. They had the first meeting of the Western Nebraska region, of the six regions, one Nebraska. Uh, that is kind of a pillar and plan. What's that?
I think it's the chamber.
Okay, yeah. And there, although there's no specific details, the first general topic of discussion for that re, this region is regional housing, a regional housing and infrastructure study, but no details on how that's going to play out. Um, the next grant cycle, grant due date for the rural workforce housing is January fifteenth. Um, and then, um, the group is working with TCD Partnering on having a spring, in April, a regional government job showcase, um, so that, and looking at using Keno funds perhaps to support, and it's, the idea is to take juniors, apparently sophomores do private industry career tours, uh, go, they go around, and then seniors do internships, or they, juniors, they want to do government jobs in April, and maybe that's an opportunity to have, and communities consider getting people to work in the seasonal part-time stuff. So, it'll be, it'd be an opportunity to participate and showcase those needs. That's it.
Okay.
Anything, Matt?
Nope.
Nope.
Tiger's still going.
Anyone else? Kevin, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay.
No, not, not yet.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Scott?
Second.
Second by Jerry.
Stricker?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.